Ready here, okay.
Jason, I don't see the camera on.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready, sir.
Recording in progress.
Mean daughter, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Can we start with a roll call, please?
Uh, council president McGurven.
Here.
Council member O'Halloran.
Here.
Council member Rivera.
Here.
Council member Alverson.
Here.
Council member Vaughn.
Here.
Council member Perez.
Here.
And council member Prince.
Here.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mayor, all are present.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we're gonna start off with a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
There we go. All right, proclamation. Uh, whereas this July, we rise up for parks and recreation and all the professionals who've built strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of parks and recreation. And whereas the city of Renton recognizes the importance of this work because park and recreation professionals advocate for their communities in service of equity, climate readiness, and overall health and well-being. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide places for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas open space, trees, and natural areas are vital to ecological benefits of cooler, cleaner air and water, reduced energy consumption, and reduced surface water runoff. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking, uh, hiking trails, a golf course, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to provoke, uh, active lifestyles. Whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as museum exhibits, out-of-school, uh, time programming, youth sports, environmental education, and nutrition services are critical to childhood development and also enhance the quality of life for all residents. Whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is guided by the city's mission to build an inclusive, informed city and make community spaces safe, engaging, and accessible to all. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim July 2022 to be Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and witness whereof. I have here and to set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 11th day of July 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council president McGurven, seconded by council member Prince. Let the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I believe your microphone is off.
Oh. How's that? Better?
Better, yes.
Okay. All right, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Sonia Mailander, Bryce Goldman, and Steve Brown.
We're not in time. Listen, Bryce, they're going next to the camera. Any one of these?
Yeah, I don't like these. No, no, I don't like to be.
We're gonna be in this one.
We're, 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 yeah. We're crashing your photo.
This is, this was a family. It was a normal, regular.
One, two, and three. And again, one more.
I'll do all those things.
I know. COVID took it away from us. All right. Yes. Well, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. It's my privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of the entire Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I know we have a very dedicated group of parks and recreation professionals that are committed to providing the best customer service and recreational opportunities that they can to the citizens of Renton, and we thank you for your continued support as we return to more normal operations. Thank you. We are definitely proud of our parks in Renton, and you guys do a great job maintaining them and providing services. So, thank you. All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening. Come connect with Renton Police Department officers and personnel at Pop-Up With A Cop on Tuesday, July 12th, at the Farmer's Market from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thursday, July 14th, at Gene Coulon Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And Tuesday, July 26th, at Sunset Neighborhood Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Ask questions, get safety information, and get to know who is serving your community. Plus, there will be fun activities for all ages. The next pop-up lunch event sponsored by the Equity Housing and Human Services Department and Emergency Feeding Program will be held on Tuesday, July 19th, from 12:00 to 1:30 p.m. at Liberty Park. Lunch and personal hygiene kits will be available to those with food insecurities and/or who are unsheltered. Surface Water Utility Division was awarded an Ecology Fiscal Year 2023 Stormwater Financial Assistance Grant in the amount of $927,000 for the construction of the Burnett and Williams Water Quality retrofit project. This project will improve water quality in the Cedar River and will upsize the storm systems along William Avenue South and Burnett Avenue South to reduce the risk of flooding. The design phase of this project was partially funded by a previously approved Ecology Water Quality Grant. The design phase should be completed in spring 2023 with construction starting in summer of 2023. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you. And next up is audience comment, and we have two people signed up for audience comments, in person and a couple, uh, virtually. When I say your name, please come up to the podium and give your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. First up is Diane Dobson. I do not see Diane in the room. Okay, and next up is Carter Farmer.
Aye. So, um, I understand that police are understaffed and crime has gone up, and obviously violent crime is a priority. But every 4th of July, the whole month of July, has become a living nightmare for anybody who lives in Renton, and especially anyone who has pets. And I was, um, really disturbed. Uh, last night, I was at the grocery store, and I was, uh, talking to the cashier, and I was complaining like I am to everyone because I'm exhausted. I mean, I literally have not had a full night's sleep in three weeks. Um, the other night, 4:00 in the morning, loud as a bomb, went off. It's every single night for weeks and weeks. And so I was saying this to the cashier, and he goes, "Oh yeah, they were letting off tons of fireworks on my street on 21st Avenue at 5:00 a.m., and a police officer pulled up, saw them lighting it, and did absolutely nothing, and said to this cashier who had to be at work at 9:00 a.m. in the morning, 'Why do you want to be one of those people who complains? It's a holiday.'" This was said on July 9th. I feel like the police, I know, like I said, I know they have their hands full in COVID and everything, but I feel like they don't do anything, and that was a perfect example of they had an opportunity to do something and did nothing. It's not just me I'm concerned about. I talked to all my neighbors, you know, half the people in the neighborhood have dogs. Everybody is upset. Everybody can't sleep. Everybody's dog or cat is traumatized, unless they're so old they're deaf or something. And, you know, I've, I've been trying to get a job. I've had to get up for job interviews on no sleep. It just goes on and on. I worry about people that are old, who might be sick, people that have PTSD. And the fine, from what I understand, if anything even is done, is only $100. So I'm proposing, make the fine something substantial, like $4,000. Make an example of a couple people. Have the police make example of a couple people. So there is some incentive for people not to do it. Right now, there's no incentive for people to not do it. None whatsoever. And I mean, I just don't think it's fair that everyone's quality of life is ruined for the pleasure of a few idiots. Who, I'm fine with 4th of July, 4th of July weekend, but when it goes on for three weeks, 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, my dog won't even come out of the bedroom now. I have to feed him in the bedroom. I have to put him in the car to take him somewhere else to even get him to go. I have to go to the bathroom. It's ridiculous. Also, I don't want to take up too much time, but there's also, um, I feel like there's not much done about people that drive incredibly recklessly. I'm walking my dog all the time, and I will see people, especially I live on Williams, the corner, near the corner of Williams and Third, I mean, because Third kind of goes out to 405. People act like it's an expressway, and people will drive down that road like 90 miles an hour, and I'm crossing the street with my dog. There's little kids playing on the street. Now, one time, they set up a, like a speed thing that said, you know, what the speed was, and you're going over the speed limit, and I was like, "Oh, great, they're finally do something." They had it there for a week, and they took it down. I don't know why it wasn't kept up. I don't know why we can't set up speed traps, make some revenue, giving some people some tickets. I mean, there's a lot of kids live on my street, and I'll see people just drive down there like 60 miles an hour, you know? And also, over by Target in the Landing, because there's some roads that are like very clear, I've seen people doing races, like driving like 100 miles an hour. And I don't see any speed traps left, you know, set up. I don't, I don't understand. Like, when I lived in New Jersey, there'd be like, police that would just sit there and wait on corners just to get people tickets. I'm like, I didn't like it if I was driving five miles over the speed limit, but, you know, I'm like, I don't understand why that can't be done, or why we can't set up some electronic speed traps, because I feel like, are we gonna wait till a little kid gets run over and gets hit, and then say, "Oh my God, we should have done something?" So, that's it. Thank you for your time. Thanks for listening. I'd really like my dog and I to get some sleep, and my neighbors.
Thank you. So I, I can answer one of your questions about the speed signs that, uh, are put up temporarily, um, because I asked that same question, why don't we leave them up? And the reality is, is that they're very effective for about two to four weeks. And then after that, people get used to them, and they stop being effective. And so, uh, the street crews actually move them around in different neighborhoods, and so it does come back to the street you're talking about. So, um, and in terms of the fireworks, um, it's, it is frustrating, and, um, I wish I had a, a magic bullet and an easy answer. Um, I know our dog was traumatized on 4th of July also. Um, and it's something that, uh, both the police department and the fire department have worked diligently to try and find solutions for. Um, and it's, it's a challenge, and it's a little bit of a cat and game, cat and mouse game out there. So, um, hopefully we'll be able to figure it out down the road. But the fireworks thing, there, there was a little hope that when the county outlawed it, starting, I believe, next year, that there'll be a little bit of a difference in, in the region, but I'm not holding my breath, so.
I, I just haven't seen anybody ever doing anything. I've never seen one.
We are, we are def, we are definitely out there, and we're, we're writing tickets, and we're confiscating fireworks, so.
But I, I, I'm just proposing, like, increase the fine, and also, um, how is it explained to me that they have to see the person light it?
Yes.
I'm confused why they can't be ticketed for a noise ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, and next up, we have some virtual, um, people that are signing up to speak, I believe.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We do have a few people that have registered to speak tonight. I do see Diane Dobson in our virtual audience.
Okay.
Diane, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening, council. For record, I'm Diane Dobson, the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. I come to you tonight as a result of an incident this weekend in Renton with the greatest of appreciation for the Renton Police Department and the Renton Police Chief John Schultz. Early on Saturday morning or late Friday night, depending on your approach, there was a life that was lost outside of a local establishment. The loss of life is devastating at any time, and in this instance, it's particularly unsettling to our community, as it is not the first incident resulting in death involving this establishment or patrons of the same. In fact, since this business reopened in May of this year, to my understanding, there have been upwards of five violent crime and/or incidents involving the use of a gun, and there have been weekly, sometimes more fights that happen with what appears to be patrons of this business. These actions are not just impactful to that business, but to the surrounding businesses and our greater Renton community as a whole. Any of the establishments that stay open late have brought in security, both for verification by age, control of patron behavior inside the bar, but also to address any challenge which may arise outside their establishment. Property and business owners are ultimately responsible for the behavior of their guests and the activities which occur on their property. We did not see the same proactive approach occurring at this establishment like we are seeing from the other locations. In fact, to combat some of the trickle-down impact upon the surrounding businesses, we were seeing restaurants and bars to change their business practices to curb the unwanted behavior from ending up at their establishment, changing from cash to credit and card payments, redesigning music scheduling, bringing in additional security, including in some instances, armed security officers, consulting with Renton Police on suggested best practices, and even closing their business early. One business owner considering closing to any weekend nighttime business and limiting to breakfast and lunch offerings only. Patrons of other businesses were fearful of coming into the downtown core because of the trickle-down effect or the overwhelming fear of being an innocent bystander in an otherwise preventable accident, injury, or even death. Existing business owners have become fearful of their customers and patrons have considered closing themselves and moving out of the Hudson area. Businesses that mere courting to come to Renton are concerned with it, what they are seeing being reported as continued and escalating crime, and choosing to take their business elsewhere outside of Renton. In response to the shooting this weekend, Chief Schultz was proactive in Renton Police action, bringing in two overtime officers to have a presence downtown, taking the steps necessary to have the business license suspended of the business where the incidents continue to occur, at least temporarily, as the owners can appeal. It's a precarious position for government to interfere in business and not something that's taken lightly. So to see the Renton Police take such swift action in response for the benefit of all the other downtown businesses and the overall safety in our Renton community is reassuring and appreciative. There's a recent social media post about the shooting and the Renton Police Department and the city's response to the same. In one day, there are over 340 reactions to the post and over 60 comments with overwhelming support for the city's response, feedback as to community members' experiences and concerns with this establishment, and appreciation for the actions by the Renton Police Department and Chief Schultz. We urge the city administration and city attorney to hear the feedback from the community, talk to other local business owners, and be proactively approach, fully this business responsible and accountable for the behavior and continued actions that occur at this location. As a representative of the Chamber of Commerce, as a longtime member of the Renton community, and involved daily in downtown for both business and pleasure, I say thank you to Chief Schultz and the Renton Police for their swift work and proactive actions on behalf of the Renton community. The utilitarian theory promotes the approach to the greatest amount of good for the greatest number of people, and this action seems to support the say that this establishment should have appealed here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Margaret Obayan. Margaret, go ahead.
Hi, can we, okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Margaret Obayan. I am a resident of Renton. Um, my partner and I moved to Renton just last year, and we really loved our experience in the neighborhood, but I'm testifying today because I'm really concerned over the number of accidents that we have either witnessed or seen remnants of in the year and a half since we've lived here. We live near a four-way stop. Um, and since we've lived here, we have seen a fence knocked over, um, the fence near our school has been knocked over, a bus stop knocked over. We've even found remnants of car crashes in our lawn. And just last week, uh, someone blew through the stop sign and almost ran into our neighbor's house. Um, it was pretty terrifying. All of us were out. Um, and we, uh, at this point, when we talk to our neighbors, we don't just say, "Did you see the accident?" Uh, we have to specify which accident we're talking about. When I went ahead and checked, um, some of the data, just to see how many accidents have been reported at this intersection, it only should, it only should one. Uh, so I think there's a real under-reporting issue, and I suspect this might be happening in other Renton neighborhoods as well. I'm really afraid that if something's not done, that we might, we will also, um, you know, have to experience fatality. We live right next to a park, right next to a elementary school, um, and there's a lack of continuous sidewalk here in this part of our neighborhood, and again, I suspect in other neighborhoods as well. Um, I really hope the council, um, in the next budget cycle, prioritize the traffic infrastructure. Um, I would love to see some funding for sidewalks, feasibility studies for things like speed bumps and, um, roundabouts to try to get people to slow down. Um, like others have shared, I'm really concerned that someone's going to be hit, and just don't want to see it happen. So thank you for the time today to testify. I'd love to follow up with details around which intersection I'm talking about, given it's a public meeting that wanted to dispose of locations. Um, but again, thank you for your public service. Really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for calling in, and please stay on the line so that you can give, um, the gal on the other end your address, and we can get back to you. We've got her email? Okay. Yeah, we definitely have, uh, ways of calming traffic, so, um, we'll have a staff member get ahold of you and, uh, take a look at your area. So, thank you for calling, and we appreciate that.
Next person we have is Kathleen Powell. Kathleen, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I may have signed up in the wrong portion. I wanted to speak in regards to the retail pet sales.
Yeah, this is the correct time.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was a, if there was a meeting tonight, and there was time set aside for public con, uh, comments.
Yeah, this is the time.
This is the time. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, and council members. This Kathleen Powell, and I'm a resident and voter. Um, I sent in an email last night regarding some statistics that I gathered regarding, um, what was referred to as D1 money for the retail pet sales ordinance. I hope you'll check your email and look that over. Um, in 2001, the Planning Commission and Renton City officials received 238 emails and/or attachments relating to a retail pet sales ordinance in Renton. These were overwhelmingly in favor of passage of a retail pet sales ordinance. The only people opposed were puppy land owners, employees, and their paid lobbyists. In 2022, the Planning Commission and Renton City officials received 47 emails and/or attachments relating to a retail pet sales ordinance in Renton. These were overwhelmingly in favor of passage, and the only two people opposed to an ordinance were the two paid lobbyists for puppy land. Uh, please note that information, that public information folder has not been updated since, um, April 2022, and I'm sure there's more emails in favor. There's been overwhelming support and favor of passage of this ordinance on social media, including Renton Next Door, Renton Crime and Safety Facebook page, and I Love Renton Facebook page, et cetera. Uh, this speaks volumes for what Renton residents want, and they want a retail pet sales ordinance that will effectively stop puppy mail pipeline coming into Renton. As a Renton animal volunteer, I thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I'm now asking the city council to act in favor of this ordinance with a grace period of 90 days. It is currently reported every day that area shelters are full and can't take any more admissions, allowing this volume of retail sales of pets in our community only works against what our local shelters and rescues are doing to save lives. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next person is Gina Carey. Can you go ahead?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey. Thank you, honorable mayor and distinguished council members. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak again on behalf of the puppies' parents. We are so excited. Your work here is helping us all move one step closer to the humane treatment of dogs. Hats off to the Planning Commission. They took this task to heart and thoroughly researched what other cities had done to find the issues here at hand and worked hard to write the ordinance before us. Did I get everything I wanted? No, but it's a worthy beginning, and the Planning Commission worked so hard in finding the right compromise that I will support. Let's support their work and minimally honor their 90-day effective date. I had hoped for an Independence Day, 4th of July effective date, and now I'm here asking for a September 1, 2022 effective date. Let's make this happen today. Let's not go through another holiday season with puppy milk puppies being sold in Renton. If we must make it longer, then at least let's tax them to pay for the safety net for these puppies instead of putting the burden on the rescue to main society we're asking in our local community. I am just a Renton resident hoping, wishing, and asking for no puppy milk puppies being sold in the city of Renton. I live here. I support local businesses. I volunteer at the local spay neuter clinic here in Renton. I obtain pet food for sustainable Renton's free grocery store every Monday. I volunteer on their fundraisers, and I'm an animal lover and an advocate. I'm owned by a cat named Charlie that was rescued at a TNR site locally. I've spent hours at my computer thoughtfully thinking about what I could say to you, Renton City Council members and Planning Commission members, to pass the humane ordinance. I truly believe we are like-minded and wish no harm on puppies, and do not look at puppies as a commodity or a product. Every pet owner I know thinks of their pet as a family member, not a product. HB 1424 at the state level stops any further grocery stores to open going forward. There is only one store, Puppyland, that will need to be regulated. In the meantime, let's not forget the puppies. The crews continue to say they are not selling puppy milk puppies. If this is true, why are they concerned about this ordinance? It only cry, it only requires a little more paperwork, some transparency on the pricing of the puppies in the store. It should be easy peasy. I hope you will consider a September 1, 2022 effective date. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you.
The last person we have signed up to speak is Ashley Dale. Ashley, go ahead.
Hello, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ashley Dale, and I am the Director of Operations with Bailey Out and Chief. Over the past 16 months since the topic of retail sales was first discussed, Renton residents have sent hundreds of emails to both the Planning Commission and the city council. It's clear that your residents are against animal cruelty and predatory business models. Public records request show that while thousands of puppies have been imported to Renton, only a handful of those that purchased those puppies have weighed in on this issue. Those who are in opposition have financial gain in this cruel industry. The one but very problematic puppy selling store in Renton is not any different from the other puppy selling stores across the country. Pet financing loans are being offered with outrageous interest rates, and this specific store has been connected to multiple puppy mills. There is currently no transparency, as they will not disclose greater information, pricing, or interest rates ahead of time. This ordinance will allow customers to thoroughly do their research prior to purchase, the same way they can do at any other retail establishment in Renton. The Planning Commission worked on this issue for over a year and felt confident in their decision to have this ordinance go into effect within 90 days. Renton residents have made it clear that they also would like this to go into effect within 90 days. The City of Renton has the opportunity to ensure that approximately 715 more puppies are not coming from puppy mills to be sold in Renton. 715 puppies is the number of puppies likely to be imported based on 2020 import numbers. That is, hundreds of families you can protect from being sold a potentially sick puppy or from being locked into a pet loan with over 100% interest. Thank you for your time and your continued work on this issue.
Okay, thank you. I believe that was everyone. I believe that was everyone.
Yes, that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody for calling in tonight. We do appreciate your input for those calling in virtually and also for taking your time out of your day and come and seeing us in person. So next up is our consent agenda. There are six items for council consideration. Are there any items that a council member pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's moved by Council President McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the consent agenda as published. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we're on to unfinished business. Council President McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Originally, the Finance Committee had nine reports, but we tabled one during our meeting. So the Finance Committee has eight reports this evening. Thank you.
Okay, the first Finance Committee committee report is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment $3,135,830.54 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and zero wire transfers. And two is payroll, a total payment of $1,670,286.88 for payroll vouchers, including 633 direct deposits and 38 checks. This is the June 1st through 15th pay period. Oh, and assigned by the committee chair member.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that the Sound Publishing Shop Local Program was the one that got pulled. So, but with that, I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second one.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez. The council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the co-compliance inspector addition and civil engineer three conversion. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to request additional appropriations of $87,881 for 2022, effective July 1, 2022, for salaries and benefits to add a one FTE, which is full-time equivalent position for a co-compliance officer, and for the conversion of a civil engineer two to a civil engineer three. These changes will be reflected on the year-end budget adjustments this fall. An increase in permit fees revenues is reflected in the Q2 budget adjustment to fund this additional FTE and conversion. The co-compliance officer difference from July 1 forward is a salary of $42,444, benefits $29,230, difference of $71,675. And then the civil engineer two to civil engineer three, also from July 1 forward, $10,052 in salaries, $6,154 in benefits, difference of $16,206 for a total difference $87,881. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a grant from King County for festivals and events. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the King County Festivals and Events Grant for $7,070 and authorize execution of the grant agreement. The grant will be used to offset expenditures of the upcoming multicultural festival. An adjustment for the grant will be included in the next quarterly budget adjustment ordinance. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
We always appreciate receiving grants for our wonderful community events. And with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the second quarter budget amendment ordinance and fee schedule resolution for 2022. Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the budget amendment and adopt the ordinance amending the 2021-2022 biennial budget to increase revenues by $20,288,868 for an amended total revenues of $714,239,343 over the biennium and increase expenditures by $25,778,223 for an amended total expenditures of $922,49,024 over the biennium and approve the resolution amending the 2021-2022 fee schedule. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you, Jason. I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, just four more to go. The Finance Committee committee report, this one is for Philip Arnold Park Site Improvements Construction Contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Active Construction Incorporated for the Philip Arnold Park Site Improvements, which is our contract 22015, in the amount of $4,711,486.18. The committee further recommends adjusting the budget to include $581,677 in funding from the Charles L. Custer Renton Park Memorial Fund funding. This is signed by the committee chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, this and the next two reports relate to our investment in our wonderful parks that we just celebrated at the beginning of this meeting. So with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a park, Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Youth Athletic Facilities Grant for Park and Court Improvement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the application to the State Recreation and Conservation Office for a $250,000 youth athletic facilities grant. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding Landscape Structures Incorporated for the Renton Senior Activity Center Outdoor Improvements Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Landscape Structures Incorporated in the amount of $248,292.46 for the Renton Senior Activity Center Outdoor Improvements and further recommends adjusting the budget to include the Renton Senior Center Fund funding. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final Finance Committee report is regarding the addition of a Surface Water Utility Engineering Specialist III. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the Surface Water Utility Section to add a new Engineering Specialist III full-time employee position to implement the required stormwater pollution source control program and to transfer $105,318 of funding from the Surface Water Utility Fund balance for the 2022 estimated salary benefits and equipment expenditures for the new position. And two, authorize the Public Works Department to hire the preferred candidate at a salary of up to Step E for the proposed position depending on qualifications of the applicant. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, the Finance Committee earned their pay this week. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning Development Committee has a committee report.
The Planning and Development Committee committee report is regarding the 2022 Title IV Stormwater Pollution Source Control Code revisions. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve adoption of the 2022 Title IV Stormwater Pollution Source Control Code revisions. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that an ordinance for the stormwater pollution source control program be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that the council concur in the Planning Development Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberson, that the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee report. In discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to legislation, and we have two resolutions and three ordinance.
All right, the first resolution is regarding the emergency closure of Lynde Avenue Southwest. A resolution to the city of Ritten, Washington, declaring an emergency and authorizing the closure of Lynde Avenue Southwest crossing Interstate 405 between Southwest 12th Street and Southwest 16th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move the resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that this resolution be adopted as read. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
All right, the second resolution is regarding the application for the youth athletic facilities grant mentioned earlier. A resolution of the city of Ritten, Washington, authorizing the submission of an application for grant funding assistance for youth athletic facility, YAF, project to the Recreation and Conservation Funding Board for the Talbot Hill Reservoir Park Court Improvement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. In your discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next is an ordinance for first reading only, and it's regarding the second quarter 2021-2022 budget amendment. An ordinance of the city of Ritten, Washington, amending the city of Ritten fiscal years 2021-2022 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5991 and amended by ordinance numbers 6017, 6021, 6030, and 6062 by increasing the budgeted revenues and expenditures by $20,288,868 and $25,778,223, respectively, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next ordinance is also for first reading. It's regarding the stormwater source control program. An ordinance of the city of Ritten, Washington, amending sections 46030 and 46100 of the Ritten municipal code adopting requirements to apply source control best management practices for pollutant generating sites, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberson, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final ordinance is prohibiting the sale of dog source from puppy mills. It had first reading on June 27th, and so this is for second and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Ritten, Washington, amending Chapter 65 of the Ritten Municipal Code to add a new section 654 prohibiting the sale, delivery, and marketing for sale of dog source from puppy mills, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date of January 1, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberson, that the ordinance, oh wait, our second reading requires a roll call.
In discussion.
In discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, we do have a discussion, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect as we've come to the close on this one, if I can say a few words, and we've had quite a bit of audience comment on it. So I'm thrilled we are bringing this to a close. I, for one, couldn't be more pleased that we have arrived at a point where we can pass something that's not just going to affect one store, but is about the sourcing of where puppies would be coming from. So that, to me, is something I think we can celebrate today with passage. So I will be enthusiastically voting yes. And while I certainly felt that I could get behind 90 days, I think that the six months will give more than enough time for anyone to come into compliance with this. And so you'll be getting a yes from me.
Mr. Mayor, what's a personal privilege?
Yes.
I want to thank everybody that participated in this process. It was a long one, but it was very important to hear from everybody. We received a lot of emails, a lot of calls, a lot of input. And in this case, for me, this is very personal. I'm very committed to protect animal rights, and I'm very proud of the final product. And more than anything, I want to thank everybody that sat in the room, in the table, and committed to compromise. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to, I want to thank everyone who've commented today and for the past few months and even up to a year of us working through this and for your patience. I want to thank those who've protested on the streets to protect our animals, our pets, our family. Some of us considered not just pets, but they're actually family members. And those who brought light to racial injustice and racism in the system of, that is broader than what we can have knowledge to. So definitely appreciate those comments. Because with every system, there are racism and things that we can always improve on. But I will definitely support this legislation and appreciate everyone's work on this.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call.
Hey, Council President McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. And I too want to thank the Planning Commission and all the people that worked, and certainly the council that worked through this problem. Appreciate all the effort. Some of these issues are more challenging than others, and this definitely was one that took a lot of work. Appreciate everybody's time and effort, so. All right, we are on to new business. Council President McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A couple of meetings to announce. First is that the committee, the whole, will be meeting at 6:00 PM on Monday, July 18th, in the Council Conferencing Center. There's one item on the agenda, and that is safer access to neighborhood destinations, or SAND for short, project briefing. And then after that, we will have our regular council meeting here in chambers and also via video conference at 7:00 PM. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have no meetings to announce, but I did want to take a moment to just say that Council President McGurven and his family and myself and my husband Saturday evening had the pleasure of attending the drum and bugle corps competition at Ritten Memorial Stadium. This was all of the Western states represented. It was a fantastic evening and a great, great example of investing our lodging and tax dollars to bring more people into Ritten. And again, we had people from Tempe, Arizona, and Casper, Wyoming, Pasco, Washington, and[1756.88]
Denver.
Denver, Colorado. All told, I would say between the participants and the performers and all of their support, 2,000 people. That's a lot of people to bring into Renton, and so I just wanted to call that out as an excellent example in reinvesting our lodging tax dollars to bring more people to Renton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, one, I'm going to read something and then refer something to staff. There's a program coming out of Fort Worth, Texas, where they hired over 40 homeless people, houseless people, that's cleaned over 3,856 tons of trash. And the city pays about $48,000 for that program while partnering with the Presbyterian Night Shelter. I would like to refer to the city of Renton staff to explore a similar program to help with trash cleanup and providing a source of income for our houseless population.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Councilwoman Prince, that we refer to the administration the program in Texas to explore trash removal from the homeless population. I'm
It was moved by Councilmember Rivera.
What did I say?
You said McGur- oh, Halloran, yeah.
I know, we look a lot alike.
Yeah, you said Councilmember Halloran.
Now I have to start all over again. Okay, moved by Councilmember Halloran, second by Council- Moved by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilwoman Prince. Been a long day.
Yeah.
That we refer the issue to administration to explore trash removal or explore the the project down in Texas of exploring trash removal by the unhoused.
Hiring the unhoused.
And hiring the unhoused, yes. Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, thank you, Councilmember Rivera. And Councilmember Alberson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the utilities committee would like to announce a meeting of the committee on oh, I heard some reverb or something, on July 18th, Monday, July 18th, 3:30 PM at the council, in the council conference room and via video conference. One item on the agenda, emerging issues in utilities, specifically utility rate setting process briefing and the downtown utility improvement project update. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an announcement. On July 18th, 2022, Monday at 5:15 PM, the transportation committee will be meeting at our council conference room or via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. One, temporary total closure of Bronson Way South. Two, construction management agreement with Perteet Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. And three, emerging issues in transportation, which is introduction of new airport director, Stephen Gleason. And I wanted to take this opportunity as well, Mr. Mayor, and wanted to inform and encourage my council members and community members. If we haven't checked out the farmer's market and support our downtown businesses. Think really, think global shop local, really supporting our small businesses. We are still struggling, even though we think the pandemic's over, but our folks are still struggling down there, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public safety committee will meet on Monday, July 18, 2022 at 4:15. There are three, the location is going to be at the Silver Conference Room or be the video conference, and we have four items in the agenda. Police staffing update, proactive policing efforts in downtown update, RFA briefing, and emerging issues in public safety. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No new business.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Be adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Prince, second by Council President McGurven, that we adjourn in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We adjourned. Thank you.